Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellingham City Council's meeting of September 25th, 2017. I'd like to announce that upcoming soon, on Monday, October 23rd, here at 7:00 in the council chambers, there will be a public hearing for the consideration of a request to adopt an institutional master plan for Watcom Community College. Would you all please join me now to say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
April Barker?
Here.
Dan Hamel?
Here.
Jean Knutson?
Here.
Michael Lillquist?
Here.
Roxanne Murphy?
Here.
Pinky Vargas?
Here.
Terry Bornammon?
Here.
Okay, we'll begin with a public hearing tonight. It's a consideration of the application for a Bureau of Justice grant in the amount The Police Department has applied for a grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance in the amount of $22,828. The application requires an opportunity for the department's governing body and citizens to comment on the proposed use of funds. The application states the funds will be used to purchase software that would automate timestamping of body-worn camera videos. Shall I introduce this to...who shall I throw this to first? Okay, I see we have Deputy Chief Flo Simon, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Council President Lillquist. Thank you for having me. Deputy Chief Flo Simon with the Bellingham Police Department. As you know, our officers started wearing body cameras approximately two years ago, and those cameras were provided by Axon, formerly known as Taser. And Axon has come out with a product, a software, that would automate the tagging of our videos. So, officers currently, at the end of their shift, they download their videos, and they can have anywhere between 10 and 12 videos per shift. They download them, and then they have to manually add a case number, add a location, add their officer name, add victim name, suspect name, all that. It takes about three minutes per video for them to do that, so they're looking at about 30 minutes on average of time than not on the street. So Axon has automated this with a software that speaks to our CAD system or our records management system, our RMS. And so, we thought, the JAG grant came out, we applied for funds for that. $16,000 for the first year, and subsequent years are $24,000. Our grant is for $22,000, so the first year would be totally paid for, and in subsequent years, we would see cost savings from time that the officers aren't spending at the station downloading their videos and tagging each individual one. So, you're looking at about a savings of $2,000 a year per officer. And if I just give you a rough estimate of 70 officers that use those daily, that's about $150,000, $140,000. So, I think the software pays for itself. I'll entertain any sort of question you might have.
Council members, any questions? Okay, I'll go ahead and then open a public hearing. Could someone check and see if there's a...people signed up for the public hearing on the justice grant, Bureau of Justice Assistance grant? Okay, there's one person signed up to speak to this topic. It looks like, I'm gonna say Teresa W., if I've got the name correct.
I did sign up on the right one.
If you sign up for the public comment, you can always do that later. But is there someone who here who wishes to speak to the public hearing on this grant from the Bureau of Justice Assistance in the amount of $22,828 for software to automate the timestamping of the body-worn camera videos?
I think I answered all their questions.
How's your flow? Good job.
If there's no objection by the council, go ahead and bring the hearing to a close. Council members?
With approval.
Okay.
Isn't this for information only?
No, sorry.
We don't need to approve it?
Yeah, so this is kind of unusual. In almost all cases, it seems to make a lot of sense to hold a hearing before a decision is made. In this case, federal rules are a little bit unusual. First, they award the grant, but then they allow a period for public by the comment and by legislative body. Actually, there was a time in the past where a grant was awarded, and there was comment from the public and the council, and we actually returned that grant. So, this hearing isn't without its purposes, but no motion is necessary. So, no, I brought it back to the council. It was the automatic thing to do, and I appreciate that. Okay, so that motion is considered withdrawn. I believe there's nothing more on this item. So, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda. Thank you very much, everyone. It's our normal 15 minutes that we set aside for public comment. Members of the public are allowed to come forward, three minutes each, to speak to the council as a whole about some topic of your interest. There'll be a timer over there to let you know your three minutes. When the bell goes off, you've still got 30 seconds, time to start wrapping it up. Just some rules for the room. Generally, sorry, as a rule, the city council simply listens. It's not a time for us to comment. If you ask us a question, we'll treat it as rhetorical. And for audience members, if you like something or don't like something, please don't applaud or boo either. Just make it a very neutral room so people feel free to say whatever they have on their mind. Pamela Sorensen, you're here to say something special. Would you come forward first? You're signed up. And then Chovia Muchia Wena Hondo will be next.
Hi, my name is Pamela Sorensen. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a volunteer with the American Cancer Society, as you may have noticed from my cape. Terry, I'm not giving you the cape. The American Cancer Society is initiating a new opportunity here in Watcom County for the first time, and that is called Real Men Wear Pink. It is an initiative to help with breast cancer education, awareness, and research. And it is driven by gentlemen in the community and civic leadership, business leadership. We have, I think we're up to 11 now in Watcom County. I'm really pleased. And one of our very first members happened to be Mr. Terry Bornammon. Terry has also had history with breast cancer in his family, as many of our men have. I personally am so passionate because I have a friend who's been fighting metastatic breast cancer for 15 years. So, this is my mission. So, during the month of October, you will see gentlemen all over the county wearing a little pink ribbon or a pink t-shirt. Ask them what their mission is, and they will tell you. And I really, really appreciate every one of these gentlemen. A year from now, we will be talking about a 5K making strides against breast cancer here in Watcom County. This is a lead-up to that. So, without any further ado, I would like to present Terry with his pink ribbon, which he gets to wear every day in the month of October, a little swag, and his t-shirt.
Thank you, Pamela. Chovia, you're next, followed by Chris Stiley, and then Joseph McDonald.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Chovia. I spoke at the last meeting, and the topic that I'm focused on is diversity with employment. And I want to start off by, first of all, compliment, hand a compliment to Bellingham. Since I have been here, I have been able to absorb all the opportunities that you all have for making sure that those who are unemployed have the skill set that is needed. Your programs are phenomenal. I have been through them, so I'm speaking from experience. But, the issue at hand is, when we have these skills being employed, some of us come and already have the skills. Some of you all have been living here and have been working 20, 30 years, and we know of outsourcing, and it's impacting a lot of us greatly. My focus was, you know, minorities and ageism, people who are from 45 and up. There have been statistics that have been put out. You can look them up also at the Chamber of Commerce and compare the numbers. And this is the issue that I'm going to continue to come at and talk about and try to approach it in a very responsible way, letting you know that I'm just not coming from, hey, we just need a job. No, we have the experience, we have the years of dedication and commitment, and I know that our younger generation also should have a place, especially graduating from college or grad school or whatever, but you can't forget about the one, you know, a percentage of your population. So, I want you to keep this in mind. Diversity training is very important. That is a very big issue here. And looking at the number of immigrants and looking at your minority population, guess what? The statistics are even. 50%, 50% unemployment for your...my immigrants and for your African-American population. So, please keep this in mind. I'll come with more. Thank you.
Thank you, Chovia. Chris Stiley is next, followed by Joseph McDonald and Brett Bopain.
Hi, my name is Chris Stiley. I was going to speak on the grizzly issue again because they've just put forth a lot of propaganda this entire summer, blaming it on fear, that people are afraid, that's why they opposed reintroduction of grizzlies into the Cascades. That's not the issue. I've stated it before. It's not about fear, it's not about human emotion. The bears will end up as roadkill, orphaned cubs, et cetera, et cetera. But they...just Backpacker Magazine, Seattle Times, Bellingham Herald, Western Front, Cascade Weekly, they're all putting that forth. It's ad hominem. I won't go into it anymore because I want to bring up another issue, and that is, I just had an incident, I'll have to say this very quickly, but I was walking down the street after using the library at the university, and I'm walking down the street and walked up by a truck, and the windows were open. There's unrestrained Dobermans in a pit bull mastiff with the cropped ears. They all lunged at me as I walked by the truck, snapping and snarling. One of the Dobermans snapped right at my face. I noticed they were not leashed, completely unrestrained. I went down, got in my van, came back, and rolled down the window. I'm like, I'm safe, I can confront the owner now. I yelled out, I said, hey, I didn't appreciate that. What if that was a child walking down the sidewalk? You're endangering children. He flew into a rage, he came running after me with a monkey wrench, saying, I have a right to do so, et cetera. Long story short, I went to the Humane Society, I went to the property management, and I went...I came here to the city council to bring this up because the Humane Society says that that man has a right to have unrestrained Dobermans in his truck because it's his private property. Even though it endangers an individual walking down a public sidewalk, he has a right to do so. That's why he flew into a rage because he knew he had a legal right to do that. I thought, okay, and the Humane Society said they're not going to do anything, nobody's going to do anything. I thought, well, me, as a citizen, I can use my anger constructively, and I can go back to this area and let people know. So, that's what I did, and I did it very politely. If people didn't want to hear, I wouldn't impose it on the information on them, but I was very polite, and I let people know. I said, hey, they've got a truck coming in here with unrestrained Dobermans, you've got to be very careful. And a lot of people thanked me. They said, thank you for letting us know about this. And, long story short, the people, they incited people against me, the ones who were moving into the apartment there, you know, college students that were doing this, they incited other people against me so that they ganged up on me and tried to get me to shut up, you know, about the issue, and they threatened me at the back of a U-Haul truck. So, this is my third threat. I had the Dobermans, I had the man chasing me with a monkey wrench, then I had these people, a man about to go for my throat with his hands. I pulled out my fishing knife, I said, get away from me. They got away from me, so I practiced self-defense in an effective manner. The police came, put me down on my knees in the middle of the street, put me in handcuffs. I'm now facing maybe a year in jail. I was trying to do something good, use my anger constructively, do something good for the community. Need to take a look at this issue because it's not right. People are just going to hurt. Humane Society won't do nothing until something happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph McDonald's next, followed by Brett Bopain, and then Yoshi Ravel.
My name is Joseph McDonald, and you know I have a speech impediment. I strongly disagree in the concept of an everlasting burden held, which I believe is the number-one misconception in Christianity. In Ezekiel 28:18, God said in the Bible, referring to the devil, "I will bring forth fire; it shall devour you and reduce you to ashes." If that's what God is going to do to the devil, wouldn't he have more compassion for human beings? I believe in the theory of annihilation and that the fires of hell go out. I believe that the lie that surely you shall not die lives on through the belief of everlasting agony and torture. But sometimes I wish there was a help for President Trump. I don't think the choices were very good in this last presidential election, particularly for Christian. I feel not voting at all was the best alternative for your conscience. Because now, at least I can tell Trump supporters, I didn't vote for Hillary Clinton either. President Trump, being the billionaire bully that he is, along with all his supporters, I think will soon have to make the choice whether to take the market, the piece, or not. Thank you, and God bless America while still here.
Thank you. Up next is Brett, and then Yoshi Ravel, and then Lynn Murphy.
Thank you. Brett Bopain, 4909 East Maryland Street. So, I live in the Silver Beach neighborhood, and Pinky Vargas' ward. So, first of all, I'd just like to say thank you guys for your service. I know that your pay is not necessarily commensurate with the effort you put in, so thank you guys, even staff, for what you do. Hopefully, you received my letter today with a few attachments. I'm here to basically follow that up, kind of summarize my concerns about a Puget Sound Energy project that I believe is not in compliance with city code. PSE submitted permit documents that did not disclose that PSE intended to add additional wires to their poles, raise the height of the poles, and also raise the height of the wires above the existing ground level of the service wires there. So, the project is not in compliance with code, first of all, for SEPA. It's a material expansion of the utility to increase the height of the poles, increase the height of the wires, and also add wires. And therefore, SEPA should have been done, and it was not. That includes notification and comment, period. Currently, what they're proposing to do, it's not an in-kind replacement of the utility. According to code and the franchise agreement with PSE, the city must approve the location, height, and types of poles, and the permit documents submitted did not disclose all that information, and therefore, the city did not approve the poles as they've currently been installed, which is five feet higher than the existing poles. Additionally, according to city code, underground utility replacement is required, is required, in all areas currently receiving underground telephone and electric service. Currently, according to even the PSE documents, I know you can't quite see this, but over 80% of the existing parcels developed in that area have underground service. I don't know that I'm going to have time to talk about the Shoreline Master Program. It's in my letter. Hopefully, you'll look at that, you'll look at the attachments. PSE is causing damage to our city by this project. They're causing damage to our views in our neighborhood through their non-compliance with Bellingham code. So, I'm not asking you to do anything extraordinary here, I'm just simply asking you to make PSE comply with city code, so.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
And I assume that letter was also sent to administration?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Okay, our administration also has your letter. Yoshi, you are next, followed by Lynn Murphy, and then Everett Barton.
Hi, I'm Yoshi Ravel. Thank you, members of the audience and staff and city council. Especially, I'd like to thank the city council for your service. I know it's not easy, and I appreciate you all putting your time and effort into trying to make the city of Bellingham a better place, and the mayor as well, wherever she's at, and staff. Specifically, I, again, come to speak about climate change. The fires, the smoke that we experienced this summer, the hurricanes, Harvey and Irma, Superstorm Sandy, the flooding that's happening in Miami Beach, the melting glaciers, it's all very real. There's no denying the fact that we're in a major change now on our planet, and we are the cause of it. And this has happened before, obviously not with humans, but with other organisms coming in and radically changing the environment because of the way the organism interacted with the environment. And major die-offs occurred. The worst was about 225 million years ago, and approximately 90% of ocean life and 75% of land life died off. That was the great die-off. That was the worst that we know of. We don't know exactly what's going to happen here. Hopefully, it will be less than that, but there are tipping points that we can go past, and it can get really ugly. And basically, we're all in denial on this. There are people who verbally deny it, but we're all in denial in that we're not changing our behavior. We're not really addressing this. This is a major threat to our existence. People are already dying because of it, and it's going to get worse. Knowing that, exactly a week ago today, I gave my car to charity. I no longer own a car or operate a car. I walk, I ride the bus, I ride a bicycle. It's a fact that if I believe something is wrong and I have to do something about it, I have to make an actual change in my life. And obviously, that's a very tiny change, but every little change we make matters because we inspire other people to do the same thing. And I've mentioned in here before that if everybody in the world lived like we do, it would require approximately five to six Planet Earths. That's not sustainable. The math doesn't add up. We have to make changes. Recycling is not enough. We need to make major changes. We can't say, I hope some other government makes a change, I hope Olympia makes a change, I hope some business person comes up with a wonderful idea. We can't depend on that. We need to make changes in our lives now, big changes. This is a real danger, and we are basically ignoring it. Thanks, y'all, and I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Lynn Murphy is next, followed by Everett Barton.
Good evening, council. Lynn Murphy with Puget Sound Energy, here to give a big thank you to city council, the mayor, and city staff for your patience and your support as we transition, PSE transitions away from coal-fired electricity. As you may know, on February, sorry, September 11th, through PSE's general rate case, PSE joined eight other parties along with UTC staff, Utilities Transportation Commission staff, in a settlement agreement that would allow for several things. First and foremost, it helps PSE pave a path for a cleaner energy future that our customers want, establish a financing mechanism for the decommissioning and remediation needed after the shutdown of PSE's coal-fired Coal Strips Units 1 and 2 in 2022. This is also a set-asides funding to pay for shutdown and cleanup costs for Units 3 and 4, creates a $10 million fund to help the community of Coal Strip, the town of Coal Strip, transition as coal becomes a smaller part of PSE's portfolio. And the settlement also includes the depreciation schedule for Units 3 and 4 so that PSE can fully retire our coal-fired units. By way of explanation, this GRC, or the General Rate Case, what this is, a regulatory legal process for the UTC and other parties to review our revenues, our profits, expenses, and investments in the utility plant and equipment to determine if proposed rates are fair, just, and appropriate. Because of your support over the last couple of years, we're waiting for another month, and then the UTC will come out with a hearing schedule, and most likely then, UTC commissioners will approve this settlement, and we will be well on our way to moving away from coal-by-wire. Are there any questions based on this process? I know it's extremely complicated, and we've done our best to try to communicate as best we can, but really, I'm here to say thank you for your support and your patience. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Everett, you'll be our last speaker tonight.
Hi, my name is Everett Barton, Puget neighborhood. I'm experiencing a market-driven termination on my unit. The owner wants to recondition the unit and raise the rent, and I was put in the unit by Watcom Homeless Service Center. When I called Opportunity Council and the WHSC, they said I would have to be totally homeless, and that I'd have to be on the bottom of the list and work my way up again because the priority goes to women and children in the housing sector. And so, when I went to look at a four-bedroom house on Ellis Street, it was being managed by Lakeway Realty. The fellow that walked me through it was Matt, and he attends Christ the King. The owner, John, goes to Northlake, so my wheels started turning, and I started saying, well, there is a cadre of people coming in, college students, who have parents to be underwriting and co-signing for them, but there's also a cadre of people who are getting their lives back together, of which I would be a father figure. But they're coming up, they're getting rid of their warrants, they're getting rid of their felonies, they're getting off drugs, and communities of faith are marshaling these individuals, and we need housing for them, and the housing would be like-minded. In other words, I, as a father figure, would make sure these people are accountable and are not going to go backwards. Simple thing. But we don't have the housing, so I'm proposing an underwriting consortium of communities of faith, which would be communities of faith realtors, communities of faith owners. They would get together, they would underwrite things like water, sewer, garbage, and recycling, until such a time as the house has enough strong earners in it to charge a flat fee for those elements. And also, they would underwrite to make sure we have good, strong earners. Right now, I have one roommate that could be with me who's working for Cruck Concrete, and he's making $25 an hour, so we need other people like that. Hopefully, the economy would stay strong, but I'm proposing this, and I'll be sending an email to April, she's concerned... we need other people like that. Hopefully, the economy would stay strong, but I'm proposing this, and I'll be sending an email to, to April. She's concerned that I, I need a space right away. She's concerned for me. Thank you, April. And I know others probably are saying, yeah, because I'm busy writing a book and everything. But, but this is a broader concern, because there are people in that second tier who've messed up and are getting their lives back together, and do need communities of like-minded individuals in order to prosper, to stay on the right track. So, that's kind of what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Everett. That concludes our 15-minute public comment period for tonight. We'll now go on to our regular business. Our regular business consists of reporting out from the committee meetings that occurred earlier in the day. At 10:30 this morning, the planning committee met. Councilmember Gene Knutson is the chair of that committee, and will give the report.
Thank you, Michael. Today, we had another committee discussion on potential regulatory approaches and techniques to provide additional housing choice in Bellingham. So far, we had a town hall meeting on June 13th, a planning committee work session, and on affordable housing on July 24th, August 14th, September 11th, and now today. The committee reviewed the comprehensive plan policies related to housing, diversity, and equity. We had a broad discussion. The outcomes of that discussion on October 9th, the committee will continue discussion on housing. On October 23rd, the committee asked staff to bring a presentation on the infill toolkits history, where it current, where it is currently available for use, and potential for expanding and appropriate use. Other ideas council members asked to explore were single-use occupancy units, pilot projects to allow smaller homes, unit types, review city surplus lands that may be appropriate for innovative and affordable housing units. Today, we heard from Rick Sepler, Alan Mariner was there, Greg Alcott, Kurt Knabefeld, and Brian Heinrich. We had a great discussion, and we'll be back at it on October 9th. End of committee.
Thank you, Gene. So, this is like the fourth or fifth in a series on housing?
One, two, three. This is the fourth. The next one will be the fifth.
And there, there may be proposals coming forth at the end after all the discussion?
Probably after the 23rd, or the 23rd, or soon after.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are you asking when we're going to stop?
No, 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 no.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. I know.
I think each meeting comes up with another, another good idea, so you're stacking them up.
No, no, it's been great. It really has. End of committee.
Okay, thank you. Justice Committee met. April Barker is the chair of that committee.
Hi, we had one item. It was for information only. The subject was discussion of the role of the prosecutor and the municipal court, and how a case moves through the court system. The justice committee is a trial basis for the council. We've been going through an opportunity for us to get educated on the criminal justice system, its complexities, and then also for hopefully constituents to come along with us so that we are better informed on how to do diversion practices, and informs our budget as well when we make those decisions. We continued that education today. We heard from city prosecutor Ryan Anderson. What I came away with was there was clear themes for Bellingham City as far as prosecution, that our Bellingham Municipal Court is seen as a rehabilitative court, and that was said over and over again. Unique to Walken to Bellingham Municipal Court is that we really focus on rehabilitation. The second was recognizing that the municipal court, due to the nature of handling misdemeanances and gross misdemeanances, touches more people than any other court, hence municipal court systems are dealing with quality-of-life crimes. And I thought that was a very interesting way to describe it. So, you can go back and watch the video and understand exactly what our, our prosecutor does. Clarifying points were really informative one, that civil infractions such as sleeping and lying, drinking in public, although they may result in fines, they are civil infractions, and they will not, people who are convicted of those will not go to jail for not paying fines. And so, that's a common misnomer that we hear often in Bellingham, is that somebody has been, been cited for several things. They've so many fines, they're then put in jail because they're not paying those fines. And, and that is very unique to our municipal court system here in Bellingham, that we do not jail people for not paying their fines for civil infractions. It's the criminal offenses that can result in jail, and each case is unique, and it was made very clear by also Judge Lev joined us, and that whole idea that sometimes we get a little bit too high up, and we need to recognize that every, every person coming through the door is a unique case, and there's a spectrum of dealing with each person individually. And then anecdotally, we don't have the numbers, but the question was asked of the prosecutor to estimate, how many people are failing to appear to their arraignment? And it was like 50%. And we don't have those hard numbers, but that's something that we are looking at unpacking a little bit as a council. Let's see, Judge Lev and the court administrator, Darlene Peterson, joined the conversation. And if you want to watch it, Judge Lev gave a virtual court introduction. So, she basically said what she says to people whenever they show up in front of her, and I'd never been to any of those, so it was a little scary. At the same time, I kept reminding myself that I'm actually sitting up here, and everything's okay. But she, and she, I thought was unique is she really recognized that that's a really scary situation for a lot of people, and she seemed very trauma-informed and wanting to make sure everybody knew what their rights were. They also talked about typically arraignment, or opportunity, our opportunities to enter a plea, and that you get, you get that opportunity within 48 hours if you're in custody, and within two weeks if you're out of custody. And then, once a trial is set, it will happen before 90 days if you're out of custody, and 60 days if you're within custody. Charges, if you are charged, for, for each individual charge, you will receive no more than 600, 364 days served in jail, and no more than $5,000 in fines. And although not required, our municipal court calls people the day before to remind them to appear. So, it goes on and on. Judge Lev did say that more than 50% of those charged with criminal offenses qualify as indigent and are assigned to council. So, that means more than 50% of the people are qualifying at poverty or below in some of those statistics. So, I thought that was also very interesting. Let's see. And if someone does fail to appear, and this is also unique to our municipal court system, they, somebody simply needs to call the courts and to schedule a no, a no-cost quash warrant. So, if somebody does like wake up the next day and say, I didn't make it, or something was going on in my life, and I wasn't able to get there, they can simply call the courts and request that, and the courts do not charge for that. So, it's important that people know that that's offered here in Walken, I mean, in Bellingham. And then, I think overall theme with our prosecutor is that if, if people don't show up, they're not participating in their own justice, and it makes it really difficult to be part of that rehabilitation court. So, we will continue with another committee meeting as we learn more about all these systems throughout the rest of the year. So, end of committee.
Thank you, April. And again, I think this is, this is now second or third in a series to investigate our criminal justice system. Okay, thank you very much. The next committee was Public Works and Public Safety. Terry Bornum is the chair of that.
Thank you, Michael. We had one item before us today, and that was a wholesale water contract with the Lummi Nation. On September 12th, 2016, the Lummi Nation applied to the city of Bellingham for a wholesale water contract to serve development of its properties in the Slater Road I-5 area. The request was for up to 300,000 to 600,000 gallons of water per day to serve a currently unknown use, which could include light industrial, retail, hospitality, and/or housing. The city is required to evaluate the application based on the criteria in Bellingham Municipal Code 15.36.040. On August 14th, 2017, the city council requested staff continue to discuss the financial terms of the wholesale water contract with the Lummi Nation to ensure that terms are in the best interest of the city pursuant to Bellingham Municipal Code. We had a very good discussion this afternoon. Staff presented three potential options, two directions to go in terms of negotiating. After a thorough discussion, the committee moved to direct staff to continue negotiating with the Lummi Nation for a water contract using the options of, one, business as usual, which would be retail rate, the retail rate out of the city multiplier, and 11.5% utility tax, and, two, create wholesale water rates and evaluate the utility percentage, or a combination of the two. This would allow to ensure the, that the terms are in the best interest of the city and to the benefit of the Lummi Nation. And included in this was also to develop a contingency plan for later review of the agreement, and I so move.
Second. Could have a motion before. Terry, I wonder if your description of the contingency is a little different than I understood it. The way you described it is contingency plan to review the decision at a later date. I thought it was more like a contingency if the rate of development proceeded this way or that, more flexibility, but set at the time of the agreement rather than revisited later. I'm not so sure if I heard the same.
I'm not sure what it was that staff wanted with, or discussed with the contingency. My understanding was when we were discussing, it was talked about that, you know, we should review, be able to review all of these kinds of things, and so that's why I use that term.
Brian?
Brian Heinrich, mayor's office. I think ideally, we'd like the, the flexibility perhaps to develop both, but I think there was some discussion this afternoon on the latter point that you'd made, Michael.
Okay. So, the motion before us, it's to proceed to continue negotiations. There's the business as usual, and then there's the number two, which would allow to adjust either of both elements or other elements. That is, adjusts the, the water rate to retail or hotel, and adjusts the utility rate one way or the other, and you, and staff would bring forward that recommendation after further discussion with the Lummi Nation to see what works for them, what works for us, what makes our utility system whole and meets our, our interests as well. So, that's the motion. Have I summarized it well enough?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. It was a complicated discussion, so. Pinky? So, that's, that was my restating the motion. Is there any further need to discuss this? Okay, so the recommendation from the committee is that the council, the whole endorsed that, that direction to staff. Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor?
No.
Nope. Oh, Pinky, go ahead. I'm looking for your hand.
Yeah. Well, usually, you say, is there any discussion?
Discussion, please.
I'm a little uncomfortable with this contingency plan. It seems a little vague and a little nebulous, and I, I'm not so, I'm not sure if I'm okay with that. I'm very in favor of the staff having an opportunity to look at what's the best thing for the city and for the Lummi Nation in regards to equity. But this contingency plan, even from the discussion this afternoon, went in many different circles, and I'm not clear what I'm voting on, so I'm not really comfortable with that part.
April?
So, I think what I heard over and over from the mayor was, do, do we want to place a contingency plan if the city were to suffer impacts later on in this development? And so, that's, I also need that to be very clear, because I want this agreement, I'm glad that staff came back. I'm glad that this, that the Public Works Committee suggested that we just go with one and two, and we take out this economic impact, because we recognize that there were a lot of things that we didn't study, and there's going to be a lot of positive. It was just only looking at potential negative, and it was, it didn't even actually consider the things that the Lummi Business Council has been mostly looking at lately. So, I'm, I'm happy to support part of that motion. I think as we talk a little bit more, I'll be able to determine maybe what my motion could be to amend that motion, but I, that contingency plan for me needs to be very clear. If it's about the utility and making sure that if development doesn't go as high, or use as much water, and we need to figure out how to pay for that infrastructure, all of that is fine with me.
That's what it is.
My understanding from the mayor was a contingency on if our general impact is, impact, general budget is impacted due to that development later. So, I just want to be clear that that's not what we're talking about then.
Well, I'm, I actually am hearing two quite distinct uses of the meaning.
I just remembered the first.
Terry?
No. What, finish up what you're saying.
Well, no, that, that was, I, I am, what you just said and what you agreed with is what I heard.
Yeah.
But I think other people are saying a slightly different version of contingency plan. What you said, Brian, is, is you'd like the freedom to look at both. What I'm hearing Pinky say, she's uncomfortable with the one, but I don't know if she's, how she feels about the other. So, I think we need to work out that one detail of the direction to staff.
Okay, so how would you like to proceed?
That's a continued discussion. Terry?
Yeah.
And then Roxanne.
Part of this, we're not approving anything right now. We're giving staff permission to go ahead, to negotiate with this contract using those two, and, and to look at those contingency plans. Yes, there's nothing solid in it, because nothing's been created. We haven't given that direction till just now. And before anything's implemented, it's coming back to us before, for any kind of approval. So, give the staff some time latitude to negotiate in terms of how to put this together. If we want to write every little detail, I'm not a lawyer. I'm not an expert on this, so I know I'm not qualified to do that. I, that's why we hire good staff to do this, and so, that's where I'm at with it. I trust that staff will keep.
Roxanne?
My hope is that each and every contingency will be negotiated. I don't want lines to be drawn in the sand of this is us, you're over there. I want it to be an example of, if Bellingham doesn't fulfill its end of the bargain, how can the Lummi Nation get out? And if the Lummi Nation doesn't proceed in a way where they're not using enough water early enough, or different things, different scenarios, I just want that all to be worked out and negotiated. And so, I don't think it has to be one contingency over another. We have to work all of this out in collaboration with the tribe, and I think we can do that work.
Pinky?
I'm, I'm very comfortable with the staff moving forward on negotiation on this, so let me be clear on that part. The only part is that there was, in the conversations, there were many different definitions of contingency. And I want to make sure that we're not saying that the contract won't be approved if we decide that we don't like what they're proposing in regards to economic development, and that's what I'm addressing, because that is, that makes me uncomfortable. And I'm putting on my utility experience here, and you provide a service based on usage and a contract, not on what that customer is going to use their power for, or use their water for, and you make that agreement on those terms and those terms alone. And that's why I'm saying, if we're saying contingency, I want to be very careful about what we're using in regards to that word.
Gene?
Yeah, and regardless of what contingency means to anybody, bottom line is, they negotiate, bring it back to us. We are the final arbiter of this. We can, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, whatever's brought back to us, if there's something we don't like, we could take it out, and they'd have to go back and, and go back and negotiate again. So, we're the final say. This is something we don't usually do. We usually get contracts when they're negotiated, and they bring them to us, and I'm happy to do it this way, because I think this is a historic time for the Lummi Nation and the city of Bellingham to collaborate on something like this. And it's a, could be once-in-a-lifetime thing. So, I'm comfortable with giving the staff direction and bringing something back to us, and we go from there.
So, just a little clarification. If you're a utility customer inside the city limits, we have no choice. We serve you. That's just the law. Outside the city limits, a wholesale contract is discretionary, which is the only reason why there's negotiating. How about we soften the directions to basically say, please go to the Lummi Nation, negotiate terms for wholesale water service, and ask both the Lummi and ourselves to consider flexibility in case conditions change in the future. Just any contract might need to anticipate changing conditions. Ask the Lummi to consider what condition, what that might be. I don't know. I think the idea of contingency is, what if things don't turn out the way either of us expect? How do we want to safeguard ourselves in the agreement, and the Lummi safeguard themselves? Is that a softer version that doesn't seem to?
Can I ask a question?
Go the wrong way. Gene?
Ted, you've done these. Maybe you can help us out. You, you've brought contracts to us before. If you sit down and negotiate with somebody, isn't that going to be part of it anyway?
Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. We would always negotiate the terms as it relates to the utility itself. So, we would ensure that the utility covers the cost to serve, and that would include, if a certain amount of water was used, or if less was used or more were used, there, there might be something that we look at in terms of base rates versus volume charge. You could do tiered charges. We haven't done that here, but it's something that is commonly done. You'd have a different rate based on how much water you consume. All of it geared towards ensuring that the utility gets enough money back to pay for that utility infrastructure that's actually serving the contract. The difference here is whether or not we want to consider any of the impacts to the general fund. And I think that's a discussion that the council is having, and there's different levels of comfort in looking at that. And that would relate to not change conditions based on water consumption, but change conditions based on the development one a different way than perhaps either Lummi Nation or the city anticipated it would. And that's where I think it gets much more challenging. It's must, it's certainly not typical business from a utility perspective, and that's where a little bit of clarity from from a utility perspective. Um, and that's where a little bit of clarity from the council may be helpful in that regard. Um, if you wanted to say, move forward and kind of look at both of those, we can try to do that. Um, but I think it would be helpful to know whether or not that's not something the city should consider. It should be just straight water utility contract using one of the two options that council preferred. We can do that. Or should we anticipate some type of, I think the word's been used, contingency if things change course out in the future because it's going to take many, many years to develop presumably.
Peter? Peter?
Yeah, Peter Raffato. Um, I was very involved in the water agreement with the port, and, um, and that is fairly analogous, and we considered lots of different things beyond necessarily what just the water and sewer utility considered as part of that agreement. And, um, and that was a government-to-government agreement. Um, because we were providing water outside of city limits and because of policies in place, we did that. Now, that was a retail service, but a lot of the same issues were at play, and we spent a lot of time. We, we came to an agreement that ultimately we felt was in the best interest of both parties. And, uh, so, and I think we have sewer districts where we consider things beyond the utility, where we have some restrictions on how they develop. So again, each one of these situations present their own unique, uh, interests as far as the city's concerned, and we try to address those in an agreement. And it's really as simple as that.
Roxanne?
I just want us to negotiate. It's that simple. Take all of these ideas and go back and meet with the tribe, and let's see what their needs are, let's see what our needs are, and see where we get in the middle.
Just offer that the administration was comfortable with the direction given this afternoon. It would encourage you to send us on our way.
It's just, the difficulty is on us restating it tonight, you know. April?
So what I hear Ted saying, and that's what I heard the mayor saying, do you want us to go forward, consider both of those options, and strictly deal with the utility itself and making sure that we can afford the infrastructure and whatever that means on how fast the development goes or slow? And/or do you want us to include, um, negotiations regarding contingencies on impact to the general fund? So what I'm supportive of is go forward, work on utility, do one of those two, and maybe even find something outside the box. I'm not supportive of going and negotiating contingencies based on what we think might happen to our general fund. This is a utility customer, so that's where I'm at with this. And if that's what I'm supporting, I'm happy to support it. But what I'm hearing Ted say is, staff really needs to know, do we support both of those? Or are we saying, nope, just go utility? Or are we saying, yep, go utility and contingent plan? And what I hear from the motion is we're saying contingent plan and utility. Everything's on the table.
And we support that.
Yeah. So I'm just saying I'm supportive of the utility piece.
Well, contingency, I mean, contingency on not using enough water, using too much, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, I, I don't remember anybody saying anything about economic impacts because that was number, that was number three.
Yeah.
Right? On the, on the wall.
It was number...
Number two.
Yeah.
It was number three.
Number three referred to specific effects.
But again, we could sit here all night and, and argue over words, but ultimately, whatever they bring back to us is what we vote on.
Can I just clarify with you, Brian? Is, is the, is this idea of the contingency plan focusing on the impacts that we think we might suffer in our general plan? Or is it focusing on like what Jean just said, on slow development, fast development, not using as much water as you said you were going to use? Which one of those two?
I think it could be either or all of the above. I mean, I think we need to contemplate, what are the impacts to the city's general fund? That is in the city's best interest to have, uh, general fund revenues. So I don't think, yeah, it'd be very difficult to say that we're, we're completely just utility focused. I don't think that's, I have a hard time imagining that just being utility focused is in the city's best interest. I think we have...
But that's the choice council has.
The impacts are, are potentially greater than that.
Terry?
Yeah, I think, uh, under, uh, the Bellingham Municipal Code, it does state that it needs to be in the best interest of the city pursuant to that Bellingham, and that it does include looking at the effect on the general fund. I mean, that's, it's got to be part of it in terms of as we, as we're looking at it. You know, we, we're kind of bound up by, by our municipal code. It's not saying, you know, we have to consider, we're not going to do that if, if they do this kind of an industry. That's not, is we're scratching that out. But it still has to be part of the equation while, while they're looking at negotiating in the best interest of the city.
Dan?
Um, under Bellingham Municipal Code fifteen dash, or point thirty-six, point oh-three-oh, um, request for contracts for direct retail service or wholesale service, the code reads, "The city council shall consider a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract for the modification, extension, or expansion of water and our sewer service only after the formal contract has been prepared and presented for city council for review."
That's it.
I'm, I want us to get to that so we can, it has something to consider. So I'm, I, I think I'm hearing correctly that we're wanting the administration to have the flexibility to, um, to continue to, to negotiate items one and two in, in, in this, in this presentation. Items one and two, and that I heard tension between wholesale rate and utility tax percentage. Um, Amy Cram from the legal department was, you know, talking about that, that tension. So I, I'd like us to get to the, to the, uh, to the code, which is fifteen thirty-six zero three zero. That's, that allows you, the administration, to negotiate and bring something back to the council for approval.
Okay, can I, just for the sake of this, I'm going to read the motion that was recorded this afternoon and see if this gets us anywhere. Um, Jean Knutson moved direct staff with Terry's, um, amendment to negotiate with the Lummi Nation to develop a water contract that takes into account, number one, business as usual, retail rate plus out-of-city multiplier and eleven point five percent utility tax. Or number two, create wholesale rate and evaluate utility tax or a combination depending on which works best for both entities, and for the staff to look into developing a contingency plan if the development does not proceed as planned. Now, that's what we voted on this afternoon, so I, I, I don't know what that is. I'm just reading what we voted on.
That's well written.
Well, I didn't write it.
Yeah.
April and then Roxanne.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from Terry, and we'll be able to go back and, and hear this, and what I'm hearing from others, is that we, we, we scratched number three, so we're no longer concerned with the Hart-Hodge study and all the impacts that might or might not happen, and we're going to go forward talking about water. So I'm, I'm fine with that, and if that's what we're doing, I will support that.
Roxanne?
We're at the beginning of this, and we're complicating it, and we're making it much harder than it is. We need our staff to negotiate with the best intent of the values that you've heard today. Go forth and negotiate. And then what they bring back to us, if we don't like it, we can say what we don't like about it, and we can ask them to go back and negotiate further. We're going to get closer and closer to an agreement that I hope will meet the needs of our city and also the service. So I don't want anyone to feel like we're bound to anything at this point. We are the decision-making entity for this.
Can we call the vote?
Well, I would say, um, first, we're actually more than a year into this, unfortunately, which is why it'd be nice to get this out. I would say that number three didn't, isn't the only one that consider general fund impacts. Number two also is there to adjust for general fund impacts. But when it comes to contingencies, I'm very happy to support contingency language just on water consumption levels, rate of build-out. But personally, I'm not looking for contingency factors on the development and the economic impacts on, on the general fund. That's just getting way too much into stepping on the toes of the tribe and their development plans. And I think that's why three was rejected. Had to do with specific fees based upon build-out and traffic impacts. It was like, whoa, 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 we don't want to get in there. We're a utility provider. We anticipate certain impacts on our, on our general fund, but let's not get too specific on that. So I, I read that there might be some rational way of having contingencies just based upon consumption levels, but rather than getting deep, deep into what the Lummi are doing. Uh, the way the motion was driven this afternoon, I'm comfortable with.
That's the way it is. Thanks for bringing that up.
If there's no disagreement, we'll consider the motion as passed this afternoon to be the motion this evening. Is there any further discussion on that motion?
Pretty much how I, I stated it this time, so yes.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes seven-zero. Thank you very much for the discussion.
Just one other issue on the, just, you know, we're saying, uh, item three isn't in there. We agree, and it doesn't mean everybody up here doesn't think or thinks that we should, you know, that that was a bad, that's a bad thing to look at what, how the city would come out with that kind of development because that, I don't think that's true because that's not true of me. But I agreed to go with this so we can get something going.
Okay, moving on. That was the Public Works Committee. Anything more from Public Works?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, committee whole is the final committee which is afternoon. Um, we didn't have any business before us except for approval of minutes. We now have a set of meeting minutes to approve for the evening of September eleventh.
Move approval second.
Motion before us to approve the meeting minutes from September eleventh. Any corrections or amendments to the meeting minutes? All those in favor approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Um, old and new business. April?
Um, I wanted, I know that, um, I wanted to update on our property search. We had talked about the criterias for a low-barrier shelter, and I know staff's been working on that, so I wanted to know if we've come any closer to a property that would work.
Evening, council members. Rick Seppler, planning, community development director. Um, as you recall, we came before this body earlier this year with a series of criteria that worked for us and worked for our partner. Um, they weren't the most expansive criteria because of the need to meet the immediate needs of the Lighthouse Mission, who has volunteered at their expense, um, to operate a shelter and construct a shelter, um, for homeless individuals. Um, in doing that, we've applied the criteria to all of the city-owned properties, and unfortunately, none of them were a good fit. Um, for each of the instances, something came up that negated it as a viable choice. We applied them to all properties that were listed on the multiple listing services. That's basically everything that's for sale within the study area. And unfortunately, we weren't able to find a property that met the size and dimension locations and the other criterion's. We looked at all of the vacant properties. These are properties that, um, were vacant but not listed. Perhaps we could approach an individual or assemble property, and that similarly, we were not able to find a site that could meet the criterias as crafted. Um, we've reached a point where we, um, have looked fairly broadly, but we have not looked at other public lands, um, that are within the study area that could potentially meet the criteria. And we felt somewhat uncomfortable about proceeding on that, as you could imagine, because we're talking about another jurisdiction's property without the other jurisdiction being involved. So we've been evaluating opportunities to perhaps reach out to the jurisdiction and see if we could have a more candid discussion, notably the county, who has a number of parcels that are within the study area.
Thank you. Yeah, I've been, um, talking with some of our peers across the street on this issue, and I think what we learned in determining a property that wasn't ours, which, well, it was ours, but the port had an option on it, uh, we saw how that kind of played out. And unfortunately, it went from, um, being that focus that we really need a low-barrier shelter into, you know, is it jobs or homelessness? And, and I didn't like the way that it ended up panning out. And I think that it's time that we've been through all of our properties, and I think that we need to maybe have a broader focus in bringing in some members from the county council, maybe even a committee, to try to look at what has the city done, and then, uh, bring more partners in to figure out. The one given thing is we all agree we need a low-barrier shelter. We know that it's a pub, public health and safety concern. This is a county issue, which some of our county council members also agree. It's not just a Bellingham issue, and we need to determine funding of partner, and we need a site. And so, um, I, I would like us to give Michael the go-ahead to chat with our county council members in talking about what, what could a broader focus group look like to be intensive, meaning it would happen rapidly and, and quickly, and to try to determine those things. The, the partner, which we can at least give them updates on where we've gone to, but partner, funding and site. We need to move forward.
Pinky?
I'm glad this topic came up because homeless is the number one concern for all the residences of Bellingham, and a lot of people in the county as well have had a lot of input. And I too have been talking to county council members about how are we going to solve this, and, and this is a broader issue. The city of Bellingham alone, we just, it's obvious. There's, there's just no way we can solve this on our, on our own, and I think we need to reach across the street, um, maybe to the port, uh, maybe the health department. I mean, I think we need to bring some partners in and, and work on this together. So I'm, I'm very supportive of that because I, I think, Rick, your team has sifted through everything, and I think we need some help.
Okay, so the motion is basically to, I guess, ask me to talk to our counterparts, invite them into some sort of a larger process?
Well, ask them to become partners in this process. So the given is we need a low-barrier shelter.
Okay.
We have those, those undetermined things of, so specific partner funding and planning, and let's go in it together.
And what form this takes, what shape it is, that's not...
I think they typically do resolutions that determine task force, different things like that, what that would look like. I'd, I'd like to leave it up to you to chat with them. I'd be happy to...
See how they'd like to proceed.
Yeah, accompany if it's possible, but we, we know that this is an emergent issue. I, I had a chance to talk with Ann Deacon of the health department, um, and just this idea of could, could we go broader? Could we maybe do some type of an inter-local group that would be this kind of intensive, rapid, looking at what the city's already done, and then try to think outside of that box a little bit further with all those properties to get to this, that, that, that thing that we need, this emergent issue of homelessness? And the drop-in center, I mean, it's in Todd's district, it's in my ward. Um, thank you to our constituents for being extremely patient to having a twenty-four-hour drop-in center that is, is not in the exact, the proper location. Um, but it's, it's, we can't just kind of continue. We need more partners. So, yeah, and I don't know if we need a motion or just a head nod to give you direction to go talk to...
Well, if I'm, if I'm going to say, hey, the, the city's interested in, in working with the county, I think I'd like the support and also the administration. I mean, if it goes anywhere, it clearly would be our administration it will be relying upon.
So the motion could be, um, ask giving, uh, the council president the authority to talk with our partners across the street, our county council members to look into developing an interlocal, um, some type of committee or task force in relation to, uh, funding partner and location of a low-barrier shelter.
Second.
Okay, with motion second, fourth, any further discussion? I guess I'd just say we should be open to whatever kind of partnership the county comes up with or they decide to lead with.
We just need more partners.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll say aye as well. So it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Anything else under old and new?
Real quick, Michael, um, as, as you probably saw in the newspaper last Friday, number seven was taken away from Bloedel down to the Snawqualicum Museum. Melancholy day for me because back in nineteen sixty-three, I sat on that locomotive with my grandfather when he retired from the cement plant. He worked there forty-five years. He drove number seven from nineteen eighteen to nineteen sixty, and then it was retired to Bloedel Donovan Park. The only thing that my brothers and sisters asked me to do is to mention his name, Clarence Knutson, senior. He was, he worked for the cement plant for forty-five years, but we're happy within that it's going, because if he'd have seen it the way it was now, I'd have been blistered to no end. I can tell you that verbally, physically, and otherwise. So I'm glad it's going to a new home, and I've been in contact with them, and they're going to make some plaque up. He, we did have a plaque with his name on it and everything, but that got vandalized years ago. So it, anybody who's still concerned about it, it's going to a good home, and we're very, very happy that it's going to be displayed. And it is going to run again because I was about five years old when I sat on his lap and with that, he did that a mile and a half back and forth for forty-five years. I don't know how he did it, but anyway, I'm glad that the parks department worked with them, and it turned out good.
So this is a railroad museum in Issaquah? Okay. Where?
Snawquali.
Snawquali, okay. And they're going to fix it up. Pinky?
I just wanted to do a little report on, on something that we talked about a lot last year, which was the Georgetown Prize. And, um, hm, hm. So I will say that we went into a partnership with Georgetown University in good faith, that they were going to uphold all the agreements. with Georgetown University in good faith, that they were going to uphold all the agreements with the 50 cities that engaged with this. And I was very hopeful. I think that Bellingham did an extraordinary job. And we were supposed to know what cities made it to the top 10 by May. Then, we were supposed to know by June. Then, August. And now, we're in mid-September. So, there are a few people who've reached out to me and asked me what's going on. And I want to apologize that I don't have a proper update for you. Georgetown has actually kind of changed the rules on us. They have said that the $5 million prize, that whoever would win, is now going to be not necessarily a cash prize, but an in-kind. And they're delaying who, who the top 10 is, or where we are in the stats. They have not been communicating very well. And so, this is really disappointing. I am very proud of all the efforts the city did. They did an extraordinary job. The staff and Public Works did a great job. I mean, we changed out all of our streetlights to LED. We changed all kinds of things in the schools. People, all the residents did great work. So, but that's all actually for the greater good. And that's the part I want to take out of this, is all of that helps our carbon reduction and helps in conservation. And, you know, as a city, we are better because of it. But I just want to say that I'm very disappointed that we have not heard anything about our status for the Georgetown Prize. And apologize for that. But just say that I wish I had a better update for you. But I don't know. And I don't know even if we win, whether we will get a cash prize. So, thank you for everyone who worked really hard. But I just want to say that I am a little disappointed in how this has come about and how there's been no final update.
Roxanne?
Well, Councilmember Vargas, I just wanted to say, we wouldn't have any of this if it weren't for you.
Yes.
This was all Councilmember Vargas's idea. And every outcome that we gained that was so helpful for our environment is because of your work. So, I think you're the prize. And I will just say that my goal for this was just to make sure that we beat the City of Anacortes in it. So, I think we won.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to report that we had the very successful, well-attended second year of the Bellingham Sea Feast down the waterfront. It was crowded as usual. This is a celebration of maritime culture, fishing, and the bounty of the sea. As some of you may know, one of the featured events is the shuck and slurp contest. I'd like to say that last year I won the slurping contest and I repeated my victory. But this is second place. This is second place next year. But it's a great event and I hope you're all there next year. Anything else under old and new? Dan?
I just wanted to report to the council that last Wednesday, I attempted to fly to Missoula to meet with their mayor and their city council members and their project development folks in their downtown redevelopment. The pilot of the plane decided 10 minutes away from Missoula to turn the plane around and fly back to Seattle because of some mechanical issue. Working on getting all the money refunded for the plane tickets. Marie is doing that. And my intent is to go back. I might drive this time just to make sure I get there. Within the next couple of weeks, I do want to bring those findings back to this council.
Anything else under old and new? Okay, I'd like to report out from our executive session. We had three items under our executive session. The first two were potential litigation. Staff provided information on a potential litigation matter that we, it was for discussion and information only. No action was taken on the first one. And similarly, it was discussion and information on the second item only, and no action was taken on that. The third item was potential acquisition of real property. Staff provided information on potential acquisition of real property. It was for information discussion only. And again, no action was taken by the city council. That's the end of the executive report. We go on to the mayor's report.
Briefly, the mayor mentioned earlier today, we have some budget work sessions coming up for the mid-bioennial budget adjustments. Those will occur on October 9th and on October 23rd. We're just scheduling those two right now because ideally, the changes won't require a great deal of committee work. But we'll do those in the mayor's boardroom like we have in the past. If that's all right with council. That's all.
Oh, and I thought of one more item that has to do with the fact that the Veer Institute is coming to town to give a presentation to the Watham County Council. Last time they did that, we kind of missed an opportunity. They were available and free, and the county would allow them to come over here and give another presentation to the city council. Because we'd like to benefit from the reforms and ideas that the county has for reducing incarceration. They're available to do it. They're coming to town. It would be next month, October 23rd, I believe.
It's October 23rd. They're going to come to our Justice Committee.
Twenty-third. We've already kind of pretty much agreed that they will come over here. The only question is that the presentation may take a little bit longer than usual, discussion a little bit longer than usual. We limit our presentations to 15 minutes in general when we discuss it. Council Barker thinks that maybe discussion presentation might go a little longer. If there's no problem, we'll go ahead and build more time into the schedule. Is there any objection to making that a longer-than-usual agenda item? And again, this will be to hear from the Veer Institute about various reforms and their insight on the justice system as ways of reducing incarceration. This won't be on the county jail. This will really be kind of lessons learned that we can apply maybe ourselves.
Yeah, just in the municipal court. And just, our Justice Committee's been meeting for an hour to 45 minutes. And we're looking at having an hour for this. 30 minutes presentation, 30 minutes for us to kind of unpack and talk about how some of their findings might, we may be able to implement, or talk about those regarding the municipal justice system.
Okay. Anything else under old and new? Okay, consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And I see there's no final readings. No further business for the Bellingham City Council? Seeing none, we are adjourned.